I'd like to call the Town Council Work Session. This is our Capital Improvement Session Number Two. Today's date is Wednesday, January 5th, and it's 6:40. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, this is our second session. It seems as though there is a shorter agenda today and a power point that's probably less than last night's, but a thorough work session last night on this capital improvement plan. So at this time, we're going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
All right, tonight's agenda will be a review of the long-term financial programs for open space, parks and recreation, senior program, as well as the fair share development fees, the affordable housing exemption values, and the affordable housing extraction value that needs to be set through the capital improvement program. So we're going to start out on page 30 of the capital budget under the program descriptions. The first page deals with the open space recreation program. At the bottom of page 30 is a spread chart that documents the amount of land that is held in some type of public trust as open space purpose. This is properties that are owned either by the municipality, land trust, state of Rhode Island, and it documents 11,042 acres of land that is protected. At this point, that equates to 30.4% of the town's land area mass. If we move on to page 32, page 32 provides a summary of the open space acquisition program schedule that we would anticipate to employ over the next six-year period. And again, that's on page 32. Couple of things that I wanted to point out. Real estate conveyance taxes, with the market being down, we're seeing less land sales and we're seeing lesser values on the sales that actually do occur. At this point, we're anticipating that we will be only able to bring into the general fund $225,000, down from $350,000 in the current year. The value of the real estate conveyance taxes that come to the open space program, and this is a council policy decision, right now, open space receives, I believe it's, is it 77%?
77%.
77% of all of the real estate conveyance fees that are collected by the town. The chart that I've just put up on the board, which is also on page 31 of the document, shows the history since the 98-99 year of the value of open space fees that have been conveyed to the open space program from real estate conveyance taxes. As you can see, over the last two years, it's been consistent at around $225,000, $223 in '08-'09, and $226 in the '09-'10 year. We are tracking at this point at about $140,000 has been taken in over the first six months of the fiscal year, which is consistent with where we were last year at this time. So our forecast at the $225 level is still there. When I put this forecast together, it was back in October with another three months of data, and December is usually one of the bigger months as far as real estate conveyance taxes because there's more real estate seemingly that's sold or large ticket items that are sold prior to December 31st. So at this point, we collected $143,759. When we look at the prior year, we had collected roughly the $132,000. So we're running a bit ahead, but we're nowhere close to what had been a carrying number of $350,000 that we had had in the past years. What that means is that this money is used to pay down the cost of debt service for prior open space bonds that have been sold by the town. It means that we will be picking up $125,000 more in tax levy requirements paying for those bonds than being able to take out of the real estate conveyance tax or the open space program. The open space program, going back to the prior slide, shows that we had a fund balance of around $230,000 that's estimated for June 30 of 2011. What I've detailed here is an ability for the town to continue to acquire property or co-mingle their funds with nonprofits for the protection of additional property at approximately $150,000, both in the '10-'11 year, in '12-'13, and then taking it up to $200,000 in each of the following four years. What we're looking at is that over the six-year term, there would be approximately $1,500,000 in additional acquisitions that would be possible, yet we would be looking at additional bonding that would be required to keep the balance in the positive in the amount of $550,000. So what I'm looking at here is there is a decline in the amount of money that we are estimating would be available. I'm sorry, the new bonds would be $1,500,000, which is the third line up in the bottom. I'm sorry, that's the amount of acquisitions, and the amount that goes to the general fund is $1,450,000. And again, that's because we've knocked down that $350,000 level down to a level of between $150,000 and $200,000. And the new bonds that would be introduced are $1 million that would be necessary to be brought in here. They would be brought in in $500,000 increments, one in the 2014 year and one in the 2016 year. Again, if the acquisitions do not occur, we can delay those bond, the bonding that's shown on the schedule. But we have traditionally anticipated that there would be dollars available for future acquisitions. I think the town is going to really need to scrutinize the request for those dollars as we go forward and ensure that the dollars that are put into this program really are reflective of the fact that we're in a down economy and that one of the prime funding sources, the real estate conveyance taxes, are not producing the same dollars as they were in prior years. You know, when we were taking in $425,000 or $438,000, you had a great deal more flexibility. You lose that flexibility unless you decide to commit more property tax dollars toward those acquisitions. Couple of the other slides that we've produced on a yearly basis is, the first is a map of the protected open space, and it's color-coded by each of the different landowners through the agricultural land preservation, the land trust, auto bond conservation, conservancy, nature conservancy, the state. And this chart, the second chart is on page five of the charts, shows the land that's been protected since 1999. 1999 is about the year when we began the aggressive program for acquiring property Since 1999, we've expended about $7.5 million in the purchases that we've been involved with. Again, many of those were joint purchases with other organizations, principally the land trust, all working with nature conservancy or the state of Rhode Island. There's no questions on that. We can move on and...
The conveyance tax, we're back, where are we, 4%, $4, 4% of the...
Dale, what's the value of the conveyance tax at this point?
For, and we're using, what, $280 of that? The state added the $1.20 to that a few years ago?
We keep 77, we keep 55% of that, 55% of that, 77% of that goes towards open space.
And again, that was a council policy. When the state put through the increase, it simply provided us with the 50%, 55% of the $4. It was the Town Council in office at that time that directed that future collections that the 77% would go to open space and the remainder would stay with the general fund. The logic at that time was that any new dollars that the state increase allowed for would go to open space. And the 77 split was because the other 23% was a base revenue coming in through the town clerk's office on a yearly basis.
But the $1.20 on top of that $280, did the state kept 100% of that?
Of the $4?
Yeah.
Yeah, they get the other, whatever the difference is, the $1.80.
Okay, thank you.
If you move on to the next project on page 33, the next project that's identified is the downtown Intomodle Park. Just in terms of a little bit of the history, the town acquired the property, acquired a grant for $427,000 back in 1999. We were then able to acquire the property in 2003, and that was after the property had been cleaned. This is the teeny property on Main Street. This is after the property had been cleaned. The overall cost to date was about $226,000. The state of Rhode Island has committed to us to provide for paving of the parking lot using Bike Path dedicated money, and in fact, that's part of the Phase III contract that's ongoing at this point. We also were recipients of a $200,000 grant, which was announced in August of 2010, in addition to a grant that had been provided earlier through the Department of Transportation. At this point, there's $760,000 that's being made available to accommodate the development of the park and the paving of the lot. We're expecting that the cost is about $625,000 on the building. We had done a preliminary design. State DOT has hired its own architect to complete that design and is moving the design reviews through historical, state historical preservation at this point. They are still anticipating a late spring construction start and completion sometime during this calendar year. We had also applied for a grant for solar lighting at that parking lot that wasn't approved through the energy program. We mentioned that last night. We're hopeful that, once the design is done, that the state will be able to also provide adequate lighting within that parking lot. If not, it's probably a future project that will be necessary for the town so that that can be used during nighttime hours safely. But again, at this point, this project had been planned, where we had anticipated having to use recreation impact fees as a funding source for a portion of the cost in addition to one of the state grants, but after the announcement of the $260,000 grant, all of the costs will be borne by the state. The state will construct the building, they will hire the contractor, they will place the building in. We will have final review and approval of the design plans. The only change from what council has seen in the back, on the design plans to date, is that they'll probably be moving the building back off of the curb line or the back of the sidewalk line several feet so that they do not need to acquire an aerial easement from another division within state DOT. I don't see that as an issue. It puts the building back a bit further. One of the things we had looked at is, based on all of the buildings on Main Street, being on the sidewalk line, we thought that that would have been a proper location. If it's properly landscaped, I think it'll look just as fine, but we haven't seen the final plans on that yet. We're hopeful to see something within the next month. Yes, Polly?
Do we have any idea what, will it be just a comfort station or will we have some space in there for storage or offices?
It'll be just as we've shown in prior years. It will include a full basement that'll be a walkout basement with a garage door that can be used for storage of equipment that's used on the bike path or for other maintenance equipment storage. The first floor will have a, one large room, as well as the restrooms that will be available and a small storage area. We're also looking at having a staircase from the first to the second floor so it's not just an access through the basement level. So yes, there will be, there may also be, based on the final design, we're hopeful that there will be a room available there for community purpose. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the Bike Path Connector.
Excuse me.
I think the council is also well-familiar. This is another one of the projects which has gone along for several budget periods and continues to be delayed. Some of the delay is directly related to necessary permits that needed to be obtained for wetland crossing to get to South County Commons. What I've introduced in the chart that's on the board at this point and also on page 34 of the document is really four different scenarios. We looked at the entire corridor. Half of the property that the Bike Path would be on would be privately owned through the holdings of South County Commons or whichever companies own that portion of the land. And what we looked at is, if we were doing the entire corridor, which is what had been anticipated, the projected cost is around $670,000. We have received grant authorization back in May of 2006 for $170,000 in a 50% matching grant. So we could spend up to $340,000, of which 170 would be state and the other 170 would be local funds if we so desire. However, we looked at it and we said, if you're doing the entire corridor, we do not see that it's appropriate to be using municipal dollars that would be an enhancement of private property. We could install a Bike Path up to the property line that we have before we enter the Commons property and have a turnaround there. It would provide, Andy, what was the distances on that?
About half a mile, about a quarter of a mile to the property.
Quarter of a mile of a path that could be installed. Our concern is it's a path to nowhere. It's a beautiful vista, but if it's not going to have the extension into the Commons, it makes little sense for us to move forward with it. The difficulty is, as of May of 2011 this year, if we do not have firm use of the dollars in place, we will lose that grant. But at this point, we have a couple of options. We could deal only with the town property, and on the right-hand side of the screen we're showing, it would cost about $225,000 for an unpaved construction or $275 if we paved it. You know, a walking path through that cantilevered treat area would not necessarily have to be paved. We think it is most appropriate if it is paved, that would cost $275,000, but that would have it ending a quarter mile in from where the access point is going into Broad Rock Playfields. If we were to deal with the entire corridor, and that's on the left-hand columns there, if it was paved, we're looking at a cost of about $670,000. My concern with doing anything on this project other than doing the entire project is concern over liability exposure. One of the most costly components of this type of a Bike Path installation is, one, the crossing of the wetland, which is all on Commons property, but secondly, and probably more importantly, is that the grade elevation change from the area behind where the gym is located at the Commons is where the terminus of the Bike Path would be. The elevation change there is probably 25 to 30 feet. So there would be a necessity for switchbacks there. If we were to build a half of a Bike Path and people were to continue to use the gravelled surface that currently exists there, once they got to the Commons, they would have no safe egress to get to the developed portion of that property. So I think we're inviting an attractive nuisance if we do anything. At this point, we're showing this as a project, but I'm not sure that this project will gain any traction with the owners of South County Commons providing a reasonable contribution toward the cost of the project before we have to give back the grant in May of this year. As I said, the only option we would have is to spend a portion of the grant money, about $137,000, on paving the quarter mile going into the existing pathway and hopefully at some future date, being able to finish that project. But again, I don't want to invite people to the end of the town property, then them transition to a gravel surface and then have to traverse the grade elevation change to get up to the parking lots behind where the World Gym is. So at this point, I think this project is probably going to have to be mothballed and we'll have to, again, reapply for grant dollars once we can come up with appropriate funding sources. Again, I'm not comfortable with recommending that the town spend somewhere in the area of $500,000 on improvements which, for the most part, are on the Commons property. Our feeling was that this is a community improvement which has specific benefit to the residents and owners of the Commons, and if they're not willing to participate in it, the project probably is going to need to be mothballed. Andy, was there anything else you wanted to add on that one? Jim?
That makes no sense. Why wouldn't they participate? And when was the last time you spoke with the owners?
I think that the owners had originally said that they would participate. They did not anticipate that the cost of the project was going to be $670,000. That cost really escalated once DEM got involved and required a wooden deck to be installed through the wetland area rather than it being paved and also being able to provide for access for the animals to cross the path, under the path. So that added to the price of the project. And I also think that, based on the economy, the owner of the property is not willing at this point to commit dollars to the project. I have spoken with him, not within the last year, but I've really had no sense that he was willing to contribute anything to the project at this point. We will make one more effort, but I don't think it'll be fruitful.
Is there a different end spot so it can flare out so we don't have that cliff when the folks arrived up there behind the gym? Is there another direction we can take or they can take?
There's a second means of egress that would take it in through the condominium component, but what it would do is it would require the installation of the path between two of the condominium units, and those are clustered to begin with, so I think that it would meet with certain resistance.
Thank you.
Steve, is this the path that's already there that you can walk to the Commons from behind Dominic Savio? Is this the path we're talking about?
Yes, the, that, where the Dominic Savio property was, was a large farm that went from Broad Rock Road all the way to Route 1. When the farm was divided up, there was a right-of-pass and repass for all owners to be able to get from Broad Rock to Route 1. That right-of-pass and repass the town still has legal rights to. So we can get to it, but we would have to make the accommodation to be able to get into their area.
But right now, there is a water, there is a water situation out there now, right? But there's no bridge, right? There isn't anything?
No, what there is is, well, I mean, it was a cop path, and it's a wide cop path, and it was widened out when the sewers were installed. South County Commons sewers drain toward Broad Rock Road and go out through Broad Rock. So the right-of-way was cleaned at the time that the sewers were installed, whatever that was, 10 years ago, through that right-of-way. So it is a, you know, the right-of-way is in good condition. It's starting to overgrow at this point, but, you know, my main concern...
It's just a straight path right up there, right? Yeah.
It's a straight path until you get past where the wetland area is, and then really you can go either to the north or to the south. Again, if you're going to the north, you're going through the condominium development. If you're going to the south, you'll end up coming in through the, right where the World Gym is located.
Thanks.
And there, the necessity there is for a series of switchbacks to be able, similar to what you have on Kingstown Road where the railroad trestle had been.
I'd be surprised that the residents there wouldn't want to join in on this because they do use it. I mean, you know, you see people walking through there in the warmer weather.
I agree, and I think that we would certainly have use of it for the elderly population at the senior center or with the student population that could go back and forth. If that connection's made, it would provide an opportunity for somebody to go from the Commons all the way through Old Mountain Field without going onto a town road.
Right.
So it's an important connection in terms of the overall Bike Path system that the town's committed to, but at this point, unless we're willing to commit a half a million dollars, and that would have to come out of recreation impact fees, and a major portion of that improvement would be occurring on the Commons property, we really can't move forward with that project. We will try one more time with the property owner, but I'm not expecting that we'll see a large commitment that would justify us adding additional dollars to the program. I'm hopeful that, as we go forward, in future years, there'll be more people interested in it. I think that in talks with the owners of the hotel, they were interested in this as well as providing another opportunity for people that are staying there, the theater, the restaurants, and also being able to provide them with an opportunity to have their guests be able to use a Bike Path. So I think that they're, I think the time may be wrong and the economy may be affecting it, but I don't think it's a project that we should take off of the burner. I think it's just one that's going to have to be delayed, and we'll have to, again, apply for additional state dollars.
Do you know if that Abel Collins's group, Complete Streets, I think was the name of it, are they involved in this at all? Have they, do you know that group that he's got? Is it, is that the name of it?
Yeah.
No? Because they're all about, you know, traveling from place to place without, biking and all of that. I think we had a memo on it about a month ago.
Well, you're talking about the...
They met at URI.
Safe communities, you've got a resolution coming on next Monday night with that, and yes, this would fit into it.
Yeah, this would be right up their alley, I would think.
And DOT is one of the sponsors with that program in terms of endorsing that program, so we're hopeful that if we can get our endorsement in with that, we... we still stay on the good side of trying to get monies for bike path expansion. Again, this one's awkward, because the right-of-way that we're looking to improve is the substantial cost. I mean, there's not much of a cost on laying out on a gravel base and the pavement on the flat town property where it's a straightaway. It's once you get across the stream crossing there and you get into the wetlands, and then you get into the grade separations that are there, coming into the parking lot. But we'll continue to look forward on the project. I just think it's going to have to continue to be delayed. Anything else?
Steve, can you give me a net number, then, that the commons would have to come up with if, for us to hold on to the DEM grant, as well as our recreation money? What kind of a number are you asking from them? The $300,000 number?
What we said in the memo is that if you took the $670,000 in its entirety versus just the town property, it's 275, so the difference is what, 395? I think that we certainly could endorse some municipal dollars to be used in the overall project of that 395. In what we've got broken out here, we were looking at the third party at around $300,000.
Right, right, okay. Thank you.
Steve, I have one question. In economic times as we face today, is there any discussion of any grants that would be rolled over or time extended because, you know, the economic times that we're in?
We apply for any money that's available. I'm not aware of anything that we could apply for that would directly relate to this project. Again, we were able to be successful in getting the $170,000 grant. I mean, that was written in 2006. It's just been impossible to be able to move the project forward, first with the wetlands issues, and then as far as the third-party funding not being available.
And do you think that it's possible to maybe revisit it with DEM? Or it's just, you know, a decision that's been made?
We've revisited with DEM several times. And I think that where we are now is where they're going to end up. Their original plans were even more severe as far as cost than where we ended up at this point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if we move on, the next project is the Neighborhood Guild. On the Neighborhood Guild, this is also a project that we've talked about for several years. The bonding authorization is in place for us to borrow a million dollars toward the improvements. I want to remind the council that the last improvements to the guild was done in 1995. At that time, there was a million dollars that was borrowed. No property taxes have been used to pay down the debt service associated with that million-dollar bond. All of the monies have come from the reinvested income within the guild fund itself. What we're looking at is that that bond will be paid off in the 2014-2015 year. So we're looking to be able to get this bond issue that will replace the prior bond issue. One of the things that we have always done is to sell bonds with an equal principal payment per year. What that does is it means that the most you pay is in the first year of the bond repayment, and each year it goes down. When we get to the 2014-15 year, there'll be $50,000 in principal necessary to pay off the remainder of that first bond, and probably about $1,800, I think it's $1,875 in interest. If we bring this project in the following year, what we would then be doing is then having the trust funds that had been being used for debt service that were no longer necessary, start funding the next 20-year bond issue for the guild. At this point, I've got it starting one year earlier. The reason I've got it one year earlier is I don't want to sell $1 million all by itself. I want to sell it in the same year. How we structure the payment on it, it can be structured in such a way so that we would have less dollars due in the first year while we were paying off the last bond. And that can be worked out. But I think that what we're looking at, at this point, is that we can sell the bond in May of 2014, have the work done through the 2014-15 year, and then pay that debt service again, not using property taxes, but using proceeds from the investment reinvested income account for the guild. Those are the dollars that Alan manages with the trustees of the school funds. And we don't see any problem with this project being able to go forward on that type of a time schedule. We had delayed the project, even though the authorization had been provided several years ago to be able to do the guild work, simply because we did not want to have two bond repayments being necessary out of the reinvested income. So this way, we've really gone the full mile. The improvements that are necessary are spelled out in the chart itself as far as we're looking at window replacements, air conditioning. Some of the main things that we want to do is to make that less of a recreation and more of leisure service, educational programs or cultural activities, a restructuring of the gym area itself. The gym is not really large enough or safe enough to be used as an active play space. And what it needs to do is it can be used for an auditorium purpose as we go forward. So all of those different things we're looking at. The other thing, too, is the guild will be reviewed with the ESCO study that we talked about last night. And if we can use dollars and we find that's the highest priorities, we may be able to do window replacements at that building as we have any of the other municipal buildings. We'll have to prioritize which buildings need to work the most. But then we can look at whether or not the guild would be entitled to any of those energy conservation dollars outside of the million dollars that we're talking about here. If there's no questions, we'll move on. The next project is the Community Gym. This is a project that has been on the drawing boards for many years. And the bonds were first approved on this back in 2004. The municipal bond at $650,000, and the school-associated bond for this project at $900,000. And a third bond that was approved in 2006 for $1.6 million. So at this point, there's $3.1 million that is available for the purpose. The longer we wait on this project, the more expensive it's going to become. Yet, at the same time, based on the economy, we could not see bringing this forward, because not just the debt service that's going to be necessary with this program, but also a substantial operating budget would be necessary to heat, light, and maintain the facility, as well as labor costs associated with the cleaning of the facility. What we've done is to put this as a placeholder for the May of 2015 potential sale, with the discussions, with the construction occurring in 2015-16. I think meaningful discussion at the council level will need to begin in the 2013-14 year on how this project's going to be scoped. We've purchased the 13.4 acres from, that sit between, you know, the Dominic Savio property that sits adjacent to the senior center. And we believe that this is a proper place to be able to centralize municipal programs. It'll cost us less, based on having everything centralized in one location. This is also a program that we believe that the amount of gym space, indoor gym space for, active play space for the kids, as well as adults, needs to be expanded in the community. The school department was supportive of this, because they also saw the development of this as providing a means for having a proper location for plastic sport activities, whether it be basketball, volleyball, those types of activities, where there would be proper size and the amenities that many of the towns enjoy with their education programs. The target number of the 4.1 million, that will have to be seriously reviewed and re-scoped at the time that the discussions are had. There's sufficient land mass to be able to build what's scoped here as a 23,000 to 24,000 square foot building. The site plan that we showed you when we purchased the Savio property showed the availability of space along Broad Rock Road that would allow for the development of twin buildings of 23,000 to 24,000 square feet, for whatever purpose that the community may need 10, 15, 20 years to the future. You know, what this would provide is the core building for that purpose only. The questions of whether you would have showers, whether you would have locker rooms, or how much of amenities would be put in in the initial program would really drive what the operational cost would be as well. At this point, it's a placeholder. What this needs to be is identified by the council as whether it still continues to be a priority for consideration in the future years of the capital budget. On the staff, on a staff perspective, we will continue to monitor and reevaluate the cost on a yearly basis. We will also, as we get closer to having to make the decision on actually starting that project, we'll also have operational budgets that will have to be considered. Because the operational budgets, I think, will probably be in the, you know, $100,000 a year operations. And we've got to also consider what type of revenue structure we would want to use for people that would be able to use the facility. So again, this is more concept than it is actual at this point. Had we not seen the economic downturn, I think this project would have been front burner last year or this year. But again, for us to put that much into bonding at a time when we're trying to reduce that, we did not feel that was appropriate. I will say, though, that as we talked about last night, we can add the $11.25 million that this budget has, which includes that $3.1 million, and still be seeing a decline from $26 million in bonded debt today, down to $18 million by the time we get to 2018. So it is appropriate, and it does fit within our financial means to be able to do it. What needs to be done is to determine what the size, scope of the program will be, what year we're going to institute it, and what type of a operational program we're going to be able to run with it. There have been questions raised on whether this facility would be in direct competition with other gyms within the community. A lot of that depends on the design and the scope of the use that's going to occur. The intent on this project really was to provide a usable gym space with appropriate ancillary things within that gym space, for bleachers, hopefully for, you know, showers in the locker room. If we were looking at what many communities have developed, which have fitness centers, then we're looking at how does that impact business community? There has been expression that this may not be advantageous to nonprofits such as YMCA. I think they would complement, rather than take away business from these other facilities. Again, if a majority of the time during the afternoon hours and nighttime hours are devoted toward organized sport activities, and we've got a number of sport programs that are, private sport programs that operate within the community, I'm not sure that there would be enough time that would really take away from any of the commercial gym activities that are occurring in the community. I think that there should be a full public discussion on that project, but I don't think that it's warranted at this point until we get closer to being able to put the project into actual construction. Comments or questions? Okay, moving on to the beach program. The beach program is presented on page 37. This program, I think the council is well aware, could see increase in escalating costs as we go forward, based on the conditions that we find as we go forward. Right now, the only thing we're talking about doing in the next year is taking care of the playground and reconstructing the playground at the beach. What we're also talking about here is putting in $60,000 over the next six years. That's really for improvements with the pavilion itself or for, you know, beach nourishment activities. Depending on what the weather does to us, there could be considerable costs. We're only holding $42,000 in the reserve fund at this point. To give you an idea, this is what we can be faced with on any given year. And this is a condition that requires us to go in with sand and to rebuild the beachfront itself. One of the things I want to point out is that, right now, a project that's on schedule that will have to be completed is that the trellis area...
Has been undermined, and we've got water interaction below each of the compliance here. We will, at this point, we're pricing out bringing in a crane that will lift and move this a second time, because if we were to pull this, it'd actually be now here. This is going to happen to be relocated, most likely relocated in this area here. The problem is that this area here, the septic system is not. Eventually, this entire facility will need to be moved back. What needs to be determined is whether or not to structure it itself, whether it's more expensive to construct a new facility behind where the tractor is, or whether we can be able to lift this and relocate it. But at this point, we're being forced to base on, this area is closed off as of last week, because we're having a settlement here where the footings have been undermined. What we need to do is we'll lift it out, we'll remove the footings, replace the footings in an appropriate area. It's not that we can just delete that. And then we'll have the crane come back and lift and put that back into place further back. I think as we go forward, the last section of the overlord is going to probably also have to be removed, because we're also having the footings that are located on the overlord are also limited type of areas as well.
The beach projects are going to be something that will most likely be developed next year as a very sizable capital improvement program that will have ongoing costs associated with it. But a lot of it depends on the movement of the ocean and the level of erosion that's occurring. But, you know, this is what we had, what was this, two years ago, Andy? Yeah, two years ago. And this is going to take probably, this is a $40,000 to $50,000 job to fix. So depending on what we have here, we don't have a lot in the reserve fund. We were not anticipating moving portions of the boardwalk, but we will need to do that, just for public safety purposes. And that's something that's under review now. In fact, Terry was out on the beach with John Shock, I think, two days ago, reviewing the conditions of the building. I mean, the building is still in great shape. The department's done an excellent job on retrofitting the restrooms, getting everything painted, and everything's clean. But it's a case of how long will the building be able to stay where it is? We've also dealt with the federal government, and we've looked at, is there any possibility of federal dollars being made available for us as a premitigation measure to be able to move the building? But again, remember, if we move the building and we move the septic system, we have to go with a high-tech IA system, and we have to determine where that relocation is going to occur. So this is a moving target. It's one that changes based on the season. And, but I think that the only thing that is a constant with that beach is the change. And that it is going to continue to see erosion. And what we have as a beach facility at this point is not going to be what we have for a beach facility 10 years from now. It's just, it's a matter of time, not a matter of if. It's a matter of when we're going to have to make those improvements. to have to make those improvements. Any questions? If not, Marina Park. Marina Park is a, a small project at this point, and I say small project because this could be a very large project. What we're holding is about $48,000 in reserve funds. That money's going to be used the next time the public works department does the stone sealing program, where those two parking lots will be stone sealed and lined off. We're also looking at whether we can reconfigure the parking lot across from the restaurant to deal better with the trailer parking that occurs there, and whether or not that can be relocated to the eastern lot. Andy's been working with the state on a possible major grant that may provide us with an ability to really construct brand-new parking lots with asphalt, deal with completely reconstructing the boat ramps, as well as the public dock that's there. We're awaiting word from the state on whether the grant can, can in fact be funded. If it is, it could be a project worth, Andy, how much were we talking about?
Close to a million dollars.
Close to a million dollars. It would allow us, using state dollars, to be able to develop this really into a first-rate What the state's interested in is that this is one of the few places that has public access and parking available with access to the pond itself. They will also, the state's also looking at work that will be done in Aragance within the next couple of years, where they will have to close off an area where public parking is occurring. So what they're hopeful is that if they do this project and be able to provide additional parking here, it'll relieve some of the pressure of them having to shut down a portion of the Naragance parking at, is it a bridge that has to be replaced, Andy?
Red Island.
So we're working with them. We had expected an answer a month ago on the availability of the funds for this project. We haven't heard back yet, but if that does happen, what we will be doing is we would be hiring an architect that would come in, do a complete marine park design, work through the waterfront advisory committee, and look at really a retrofit of everything that's there that's not under lease at this point. And I think that the dollars that would be spent would really enhance the public access and use. The real question would be how we would manage the trailer uses, or if we're going to enhance the trailers there at the expense of the people that are using the waterfront. It's a balancing act. But until we get a firm commitment from the state on availability of funds, we will just stay with the basic program that we're talking about in the capital budget, which is a repaving of the existing parking lots with stone seal, and doing renovation works both on the ramp and on the, on the, the public dock that's located there. Andy, is there information you want to give on that, the scope of that program?
I think you covered most of the major elements. There's a few other things that were included, such as an improvement and expansion to the town dock system, to widening of the boat ramp, the main public, the, what we call the west boat ramp. The east one is a very small one, bit nondescript, most people don't even know it's there. It's kind of tucked in near the Pointe du Yacht Club, which could also potentially be improved. It was to look at the potential expansion of parking, but also to look to preserve the green space in the park itself with some newer parking technologies, similar to what was used at the West Kingston Park. Where you drive in, there's different types of matting grids that still allow for stability, eliminates the rutting when heavy trucks come in with boat trailers, but still allows the grass to grow through those, you know, particular mats. So, you know, in addition to that, it would allow for a location for the harbor master to be based right in the park, for, to enhance some of the educational programs for the recreational boaters that are there. And that, that pretty much covered it, but the numbers add up pretty quickly, because the boat ramp component itself is a, is an extremely sizable and technical project that would be completely rebuilt and widened, so that would really eat up a million dollars. Seems like a lot, but it goes pretty quickly on a project like that.
One of the things it would also include that we haven't mentioned yet would be relocation of the overhead aerial lines. One of the problems that we've had in the past is people that forget to take the mask down on an aluminum mast and bring the boat out of the water and, and hit the power lines. So if we're going to develop that into a proper boat ramp access point, we need to look at working with underground utilities at minimum for the crossing onto the town road itself.
Another thing I would add is that's actually a federal grant through Federal Fish and Wildlife. It was a 2009 grant that State DEM was working with, so we're kind of coordinating through the State DEM, which has facilitated that grant application on the town's behalf with the federal government. So we should have, as the manager mentioned, within the next month, we should have a confirmation, hopefully a positive one, on that program. I think our application was for about $975,000.
As I say, we'll submit for everything. Next project on page 38 is the senior center program. Terry, you want to come up on this? As noted in the narrative, the center's now been in operation for 10 years. It doesn't seem possible, but that facility's been online for 10 years. We're servicing about 200 clients a day, people that are coming in doing recreational activities, social activities, as well as the lunch and program. What we are proposing to do at this time is to start to set up a operational reserve fund for maintenance of the, of the main building. What we've broken out in the narrative is the four components of the senior center facilities and its operation. One being the center itself, and that's what we're looking at over the next few years. In 2014 and 2016, setting money aside, I think it's $10,000 a year, to do interior improvements, which would include things like the repainting, wallpapering, or one of the other things that we did not buy when we first developed the center was to have a divider that would go down the center of where the, where the dining room is, so that you could cordon that area off for, other than during the lunch hours, to be able to have really separated space for, for multiple activities to be able to occur. So we're looking at, at those type of, type of things. The property holdings where senior program operates also has two other buildings. One is the original meal site itself, the Tetro Center. That was the original meal site and is now really in a state of disrepair. Yet, the space continues to be used for the senior program. One thing that happens with any space that you have, if it's available, it will grow people. And what's happened is the activities that need to spread out have spread out and are actively on a daily, day basis using the annex. We've also allowed a food program and a tax program to locate within that building. At this point, if we're going to continue to use it for public purpose, and we really need it for the senior activities that are occurring there, we're going to have to expend dollars. We're looking at about $30,000 in dealing with the window replacement there, as well as the shingles that need to be, the exterior of the building's in poor shape. Yeah, Carol?
Where is the annex?
If you walk out the front door of the senior center and you walked straight across, you would walk right into the building.
Oh.
It's across the parking lot, and that was the original cow barn for the farm.
I thought that was the barn, because there's barn, senior center barn improvements too. Are those two separate buildings?
The annex, the barn improvements is the, is the small shed that's off to the side, which would be, as you walk out the front door, it would be really to the left, rather than going to the right, where you would be going to the annex. But we call what had been the cow barn an annex at this point, and that's the building that's being used for program activities. The other shed or barn is really for storage of materials and equipment that are used by, by the program. I'm not necessarily convinced that we will be able to generate $140,000 over the next six years for all of the program activities that the senior program has requested, but I think that each of the program components are important components as far as building maintenance and upkeep of, of the public property there at, at the center. There are improvements that can be made, or the buildings could be removed. Certainly not the annex, I think we've spent too much money there, but on the barn, if we were to remove it, then we lose the storage that we need for the maintenance equipment that, that is necessary for the operation over there. Do we have to make it into a, you know, a shiny place? And, no, we don't, but I think that it's going to take several years before we're going to be able to come up with those dollars. What I've shown in the capital budget is, in each of the six years within the capital program, on the pay-as-you-go section, certain dollars being set aside for reserve, and then we'll spend those monies on an as-need basis as we go forward. The last item within the seniors program is the, is the replacement of the bus, our senior program bus. At this point, we've got $60,000 that's in the reserve fund. We are recommending $30,000 in the 11, 12-year pay-as-you-go. That'll give us the $90,000 necessary to replace that, the existing, the existing vehicle. That vehicle will cost about $90,000. Normally, what we would do is we wouldn't buy this directly, we would buy it through Riptor. Riptor would have master bidding documents for the acquisition of vehicles of this nature, and normally we can get a price because they're buying multiple items on a year-to-year basis. But we expect the price to be around $90,000. The mileage on the vehicle at the time that we trade in will probably be in the area of 130,000 miles. One of the problems is that if we have a backup vehicle, but that backup vehicle really is in poor repair, the existing vehicle would be held back, just as we do with the EMS equipment. You would hold back the most recent active piece, that would become the backup, so that when services were necessary on the newer vehicle, the line vehicle, you wouldn't have to stop the services. The adult day services, we are expecting to complete that project in the 10, 11 years, so at this point, it's not part of the capital budget. You may want to give an update as to where we stand with that at this point with the septic system and all.
Sure. Currently, we're working with a vendor, Advanced Waste Water Technology, for the design of a new septic system so that we can move forward with the expansion, expansion of the adult day services. A new septic system was in order because of the DEM guidelines with regard to wastewater treatment. We anticipate that the design will be completed within the next month, and that we will then start work with the architect, who has already been identified, RGB Architects, and he will begin design of the expansion. We're still anticipating in the vicinity of a 1,000-square-foot expansion of the facility, which will, again, enable us to offer more programming, rely on our staff for more therapeutic care, then more involvement with moving furniture and setting up and breaking down because of the limitation of space that we have right now. So we are anticipating by, by the spring, April, to have a design in place for the, for the expansion.
Any questions on any of the senior components? If not, we can move on, and I'd ask you to go to page 85, and we're going to go to the pay-as-you-go portion of the recreation and senior program. These were the few pages that we did not do last night on the pay-as-you-go section. For the parks improvements and rehabilitation program for the 11, 12 year, we're recommending, expending $80,000 in, in improvements that will be done for six different facilities. There's a seventh activity that we are also proposing to do, which is the installation of a staircase at the dog park. Those wouldn't be paid for through the capital budget, they would be paid for through the reserve fund for the dog park. As the council will recall, we had, the council had set aside $20,000. We spent $10,000 of that. We would now be using the reserve funds that are held for the dog park improvements to be able to build that staircase. So that's, puts it up to a total of $85,000 that the department would be responsible for expenditure of, but only $80,000 that would be going through the general fund itself. The first activity, Terry, you want to walk them through on, on these projects?
Sure. The, the first project is the, at the Broad Rock Play Fields, is the landscaping, retaining wall and fencing. And it involves the expansion of the retention wall adjacent to the softball field. Currently, there's a slope there that leads down to the field that people are tending to, to use rather than the staircase that's there. That's resulting in deterioration of the sidewalk and also the slope itself. So the department is looking to use this funding to shore up that walkway with a retention wall and railing for that, for that particular project. Town resources will be used where possible with prepping the site and also finishing up the, the project as well.
I think this picture just shows the entire issue. At this point, there needs to be railing put in to prevent people from going down. Why they would go down the steep slope rather than the stairs, I'm not sure, but it is a liability exposure for the town that, that we need to take care of, so we'll put the retaining wall in and the railing as a way of preventing the access to that area.
The next project is at the Curtis Corner Play Fields and involves the rehab of the restrooms. The restrooms will receive improvements, including automatic fixtures, exterior locking, automatic mechanisms on the doors, and new partitions made of a non-absorbent waterproof polyethylene plastic, similar to Marina Park and the town beach restrooms. We hope to be able to accomplish this with a total project cost of $10,000, $10,000 with a request of $5,000 this year and use of capital improvement reserve funds to complete that project.
No questions, we'll move on. Next item is the Old Mountain Field, which has been in the news of recent.
Yes, it has. If you haven't noticed, we're two light poles short since the blizzard, and so this would probably speed up this project a bit. And this involves the third phase, the third installment of funding for the replacement of the wooden light poles and fixtures at the Old Mountain Field softball field. The wooden poles were completely brittle and deteriorated. I believe they're at least 30 years old.
There are rumors that Terry was seen at 2:00 AM in the snow pulling on those poles, but...
Giving them a little push. But no, the damage is very obvious. If we get another high windstorm, we may just see a little, a little more damage. But what we're looking to do is be able to replace those with obviously energy-efficient lighting fixtures and, and new poles.
I think the, the projects become bigger than we had anticipated when we had looked at this project, and it became part of the budget. Right now, I want to take a more serious look and find out what the cost is if we replace the wooden poles with metal poles. Certainly, the lighting will provide greater efficiency. We've also filed a claim with the insurance carrier as to the damage that was done here. As we move through the project, certainly this is going to be something that'll be before the council as far as a bid award, but it may be a case that, that we need to do it once and do it right, rather than to end up with a situation that we end up with a shorter duration for the replacement poles as we go forward. The other thing too, is based on the lighting efficiency that can be reduced here, we may be able to reduce from the six poles... be able to reduce from the six poles down to four. If we can deal with that and provide proper light distribution on the field itself, while I think it will certainly exceed the $60,000 that's available, I want to see what those costs will be, and we'll determine what course of action we should take on it.
The next project involves the upgrade of the town beach play structure. The current structure is about 17 years old, showing signs of wear and tear, and we're looking to replace that structure with a new one. And we'd like to also look at the broadening, the use of the structure. Right now, the structure that you see in this picture is really geared towards two-to-five year olds. We're looking to maybe put something in place that is available to the use of children in a broader scope of age, two-to-12-year-olds, so we have a little bit more access for the older children as well. The next project involves road repair and seal coating at Tucker Town Park. This is general maintenance and upkeep of this particular facility, which is very high-volume use by the community, three seasons a year, and the total project cost is $10,000. That would include repair of the asphalt, patching, seal coating, and also line striping of the parking lots. Rails weren't included. Certainly can be inspected to be sure they're safe and solid.
Terry, do we have lighting for the tennis and basketball at the West Kingston Park?
Lighting for the tennis? You know, I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe our tennis courts at West Kingston are lit. The fields are, but the courts are not.
Okay, none? There's no lights at Tucker Town. That was a condition of the master plan that was developed at that time.
Terry, I just have two questions. The water for the dogs at the dog park, will anything be done to bring the water lines closer?
We're looking at that in terms of irrigation to connect with the Broad Rock irrigation for the field itself. The water lines themselves, we are exploring that option. However, there is the national grid lines and other easement barriers that may prevent that. The Dog Park Association is involved, we're discussing with them how we might be able to accomplish that project, but it's certainly on the priority list to be able to provide water for the dogs.
Okay. So it's not a piece of anything, any money that's been allocated here?
No.
Okay. And the second question is, there was discussion with the fireworks and changing of the seating, taking away more seats for the fireworks at Old Mountain Fields? And is there any money allocated here to meet the needs to get that accomplished?
There's nothing in this particular proposal to fund anything that would expand seating. However, we have met, the department has met with the public safety officials, we feel comfortable that we will be able to maintain the amount of seating that we've had in previous years, but we are also looking at options to push the staging area back possibly, if we could, a bit further, so that we can maintain the seating at Old Mountain Field.
Okay, so there's no funds needed, you know, to get that accomplished?
We don't believe so. I mean, if there were funding, it would be minimal.
Okay, great. Thanks.
The next project involves the bike path and improvements to phases one and two of the bike path, including repairs to the asphalt in certain areas, and also to correct some drainage issues, particularly on phase one. There are some locations between South Road and Ministerial Road that need some attention. On phase two, between church and main, there are some areas that need new asphalt on them because there was some damage done through tree roots. Trees have been removed, however, the damage is done, and we're looking to be able to cut and patch those areas with asphalt and do some striping in areas that have been deteriorated And as the town manager mentioned, this particular project with the dog park involving stairway access down the steep slope from the parking lot, what has occurred over the past six months or so is that obviously the use of the dog park has been fabulous. The people who are coming, however, would prefer to come down the slope than to follow the winding pathway down to the entrance to the dog park, and while that's okay for their four-legged friends, it's a bit of a risk for our two-legged users. And with that, we'd like to install a stairway down the slope that will hopefully encourage people to use the stairway rather than navigate the steep slope, which obviously can be risky. Again, it's the same issue with the Broad Rock softball field, and you know, people may continue to use the slope, but at least we've offered a safe access to the dog park. As far as the equipment that the department will be requesting funding for this year, we have first, a one-ton capacity pickup truck that is used in the general day-to-day service of parks and facilities, and we're looking to replace that. It generally towes one of the landscape trailers carrying equipment to various parks and facilities for maintenance purposes. It also is used in the plowing as one of the plow machines for the fleet in the wintertime. We also have a tilt cab dump truck, also at a one-ton capacity with a stake body which allows for carrying of bulky items such as leaves or seaweed, things of that nature, with a proposed cost of $37,000. Again, this is used also in day-to-day operations of maintenance of parks and facilities and also in plowing in the wintertime. We are also looking to replace a multi-use vehicle. It is a 2003 Toro that is used on the bike path for various maintenance. We're looking to replace that with a new one. It is taken on the bike path by our parks crew to do various maintenance, blowing the bike path off, carrying equipment out to the bike path for any types of repair or maintenance, that type of thing. And finally, we would like to replace an equipment trailer. Again, this is the 21-foot trailer that carries landscape equipment from field to field for the daily maintenance of our parks and facilities.
If there's no questions, we can move on, and I'm going to ask you to go back, and we're going to start with the fair share development fees, and that starts on, let's see.
Steve, could I just ask one question? The bike path, do we at any time after snow, you know, plow that?
Yes, yes and no. What we are doing is we plow that portion of the bike path that would be used possibly by children going to school in the, let's call it the urban area, Peace Dale Wakefield area. When we go out past South Road, I believe South Road is the boundary, and from South Road to Ministerial, to the train station, is available for snow skiing.
Okay, because I know I was on a portion of it, Paul, that was not, so that's why I'm asking. I, so that's, you know...
My part was done.
I know. So I know, you frequently use the bike path as well.
Unfortunately, we've got two different user groups that there is some conflict with, and what we've really tried to do is to provide both groups with the right to be able to either walk or to be able to use it for snowshoe or whatever they want to do with cross-country.
Thank you. Carol?
Steve, and maybe Terry, I should ask you this, but Steve probably. Last night, we were talking about different trucks and equipment that were in the budget for Public Works equipment and facilities, and it seems like some of these vehicles are similar. You know, it looked like a pickup truck, dump truck. Is there, I mean, is, we use these vehicles for both purposes, or don't we interchange the utility of these vehicles?
Let me start out by saying that the equipment that we're asking to replace is equipment that needs to be replaced, that is being used on a day-to-day basis. All of my municipal departments work in conjunction with each other. Recreation program employees have plow routes and sanding routes, just as the Public Works people do, and we also use people from some of the other departments as well. So it's not a question of us having a truck that's going to sit idle while Public Works isn't using it, that Recreation could. The equipment that we're, you know, you've got 19 people in the Public Works Department and 14 that are going to be doing work in recreation activities. All of that equipment is out every day of the week that we have, so those trucks need to be replaced. And the problem with not replacing all of the equipment is that if we don't replace it and we have the plow routes go down, then it's a slower response time for us to be able to get through a storm. I will also note that we have, based on the way budgets have been over the past three years, we have prevented departments from expending capital dollars for equipment replacement unless there was an urgent need, either the engine was blown or there was a reason to get rid of the piece of equipment. Because the money goes into the reserve fund, I can hold that money back till the time that the truck has to be replaced. So the money that you would approve in the 11-12 budget may not even be spent in 11-12 if we feel that the existing equipment still has some useful life to it. But no, when, the requests that I've seen exceed what you're seeing as far as the amount of equipment that the departments would propose to be replaced.
Okay, I just wanted to point out, it seemed, a couple, at least one of the vehicles seemed similar to what Public Works was, you laid out last night for Public Works.
Last night with Public Works, we're talking about a large dump truck as well as a pickup truck.
Yeah.
That would be acquired, but those are needed in addition to the equipment that Recreation has to have. Our problem is that, you know, if a truck goes down with Recreation and I've got no grass mowing that's being done, and I lose the productivity of that crew.
True.
So we've got to make sure that that stuff stays up and is operational. Same thing with the trailer.
Right.
If the trailer can't be used, I can't haul the equipment to be able to get the job done. But no, we're quite frugal as far as what we allow them to get into the capital budget, and we're equally frugal in terms of not allowing them to spend the dollars unless there's documentation for the urgency. Some of the equipment that was requested and approved two years ago has still not been authorized at this point. The reason I do that, too, is that we're always concerned with supplemental budgets that may cut aid that is anticipated, so that if we were to lose dollars with the budget to be able to keep a balance, what we would do is not take the money that was appropriate in the capital budget and transfer it into the reserve fund. Obviously, we would have to reappropriate the following year, but at the same time, we would be able to control the surplus position of the operating fund.
Thank you.
Okay, if we move on to page 75, and I think Vin Murray's going to join us. Fair share development fees, there are two fair share development fees. One is for recreational facilities, and the second is for open space conservation parks and recreation lands. The education fair share fee provides limited reimbursement of capital costs associated with the development of new school facilities and is imposed at the time that the issuance of the building permit. Revenues from the fair share fees are used to pay down the debt service associated with those school projects. As far as the open space recreation land fair share fee, that component is used to either acquire land or to develop land for active recreation purposes. It can also be used for the purchase of passive recreation lands. This could include anything from recreational facilities, you know, beach or salt pond, freshwater access. We may need to use recreation impact fees to address some of the beach problems that we have, because those would be an expansion of existing program that would benefit the people that have just moved into town as well as the people that have lived in town. So each of those are set up, they are dedicated funds, they can only be used for capital purposes, they cannot be used to defray operational costs. The methodology, last year, we changed the methodology associated with the education fair share fee. We are continuing to do that. Probably the best way of looking at it is that what we have looked at, and I'll give you the schedule, and I say to the council, and I apologize, I've redeveloped the schedule today. I found an error in what I had calculated for the middle school construction costs. As you recall, last year, we refinanced some of the debt, so what I needed to do was to restructure the amount of debt, which also was going to, what the interest expense was, and I also had to restructure associated with what state aid reimbursement, the 30% reimbursement would be. Alan and I worked up the numbers today. These are the new numbers that I will be proposing to you when the budget goes to formal adoption consideration at the end of this month. So essentially, what we're looking at is that the cost of the middle school, when we got done with the land acquisition, the facilities construction itself, the athletic fields that were specifically associated with the school building and the equipment, has a total cost of $12.6 million. The interest cost associated with that was $5.9 million. So you had a recoverable cost of $18.5 million before state aid. State aid was a 30% reimbursement, so that gets you the $5.5 million. So it means that the net cost of the facility to the community is almost $13 million, a $12.974. The $12.974, in establishing the fee structure, what we determined was that 50% of that value is servicing population that is present families that are going to be sending kids to the school. Those would be people that are in existing housing prior to the installation of this fee schedule back in 2002, and that 50% would come from new houses constructed subsequent to the 2002 bond. So when we do that, we end up where each of the cost sharing would be about $6.5 million from tax base and $6.5 million to be generated from the fees itself. The formula that we instituted last year, and I still think is a viable formula, is to look at what the building was constructed for, and that was constructed as a 600-seat school, assuming that 50% of the population that would be serviced through the school would be from existing housing stock. That means that students coming from housing constructed after the 1990... That means that students coming from housing constructed after the 1990 maximum use here occurred with enrollments, there would be 300 students that could be housed within that structure. We assume that before the building is renovated, it would have a 15-year use, so you would take 15 times the 300 students, or 4,500 seats would be available. Each individual student in a true middle school environment would be there for three years, so you would actually be addressing 1,500 unrelated individuals. So the 1,500 would be divided into the $4,865,000 recoverable cost, and it would come up to $3,244. The value in the current year is $3,361. The $3,244 would mean a reduction of $117 from what the current year is. Some of that, as I say, would be reduced, costs associated with the facility as it pertained to interest being reduced when we refinance those bonds. As has been in the past, the two bedrooms or less would be discounted at 50%, and multi-household units with one bedroom would pay 25% of that value. So you've got an effective reduction of $117 off $59 for the two bedrooms or less, or a reduction of $29 where the accessory apartment or multi-household unit with one bedroom would be involved. If you look at the budget document itself, the fee that I had originally anticipated was $3,006, which would have been a $355 reduction. I think that the schedule that's presented to you tonight is based on the numbers that Alan and I verified again today, and I feel is what should be put forward as far as council consideration. Are there questions as far as the fee structure as presented? If not, let's move on. I wanted to also take a look at what education fair share fees have meant to the community. As you can see, since we started collecting them back in 2000, 2001 year, as it related to Broad Rock School, we've collected 2.5 million of the total 4.8 million that we're anticipating that should come from fees if we're going to recover 50%. Let me go back on that formula one last time. Once we came up with the $6.5 million share, we also took a discount of 25%, where we took the 25% of the total value that would be recoverable by fees off of the top. The reason we did that is we never want a legal challenge of the numbers, and so by having the 25% reduction in what we would want to recover from the impact fees, we feel that any type of litigation that we challenge, how we establish the fee would be thrown out because we've already taken out a 25% discount from what we believe and based on the calculations should be the true cost. I think it's also important to note that when we look at what's been collected in the fees, that 2.5 million, based on student enrollments going down, and we continue to collect that fee over the life of that bond itself, we will get very close to collecting the 4.8 million. If we move on with the recreation fair share fees, this year, I'm recommending a change in the methodology for the assessment of the recreation fair share fee. The modifications to the method would establish a two-tier fee based on occupancy types and expected average household sizes. The reason we're looking to do that is that based on looking at the types of housing being constructed over the last four or five years, we're seeing that many of the houses that are smaller in nature and really are not showing a 2.56 number of people per household, particularly if they're condominiums that are senior-related housing, or if they are small duplexes. And so what we're suggesting is that we should be revising and providing a two-tiered approach, one that looks at the traditional single-family home, three-bedroom, which would have an average household size of the 2.56 according to the census from the year 2000. And we should be looking at a fee structure where it's related to, you know, plus 55 housing, where we would take 25% of that value off. So we would be looking at it as if it had 1.92 people per house. When we do that, I don't know why I keep going in the wrong direction tonight, we set up the fee schedule. The fee schedule is based on the following, and this is in the ordinance itself, the estimated value of an acre of land. When I got the numbers from Gene this year, based on the revaluation that occurred, we dropped from 140,000 to 110,000. Whether that number's real or not real, I can't tell you, because I'm not sure that you're going to be buying a single acre of land for recreational purposes. Usually, you're going to buy a tract of land, but that's the way the ordinance was developed. It talks about on a per-acre basis. It also looks at standards saying that you need 10.5 acres for every 1,000 people that you have new in the community. So if you have 5.6 people per household, you would need to collect $2,957. That number is down because we're using 110,000 rather than the 140,000 in the current year. The fee that was in place in the current year was set at... $3,763, so it'll be an $806 reduction. On the two-bedroom or less, which will be the elderly housing, we're looking at a $1,546 reduction, because they were paying the full value, they were paying the full $3763. I don't feel that's appropriate when we look at the size of the households that would be populating those new residential units. What's the cost of doing this? If we had 40 single houses and 49 single houses, we would generate about $206,000 under the program fees that I've listed here. If you had the 40 houses at the straight fee of the $2957, you'd generate about $36,000 more. So would we be losing $36,000? Yes, but if we were obtaining the $36,000, knowing full well that the population that was being served was much less, I don't feel it's an appropriate way for us to address it. This would be the first time that we would set up the two-tier. We've got the two-tier on the education impact fees. We have not seen fit to provide any differentiation in family size. I think that originally, because there were so few duplex two-bedroom units being constructed and everything was the traditional three-to-four bedroom, it was overlooked. But I think now, based on the mix that we're seeing, where we've got far more smaller units being constructed, that this is an appropriate revision to the methodology and establishment of the fee structure as presented in the budget document. Vin?
I think I would echo, I would echo Steve's point. I think this is a more equitable means of calculating the fee. And with the smaller households and senior housing, I think that population tends to have less of a user profile for active recreation uses, so that adds to the fairness issue. And I think when we see the census roll out next year, we'll probably have, well, this spring, actually, we'll see, I think the demographics will likely support a smaller household formation size in any event, so, you know, in future capital budgets, we'll likely see readjustment of this methodology, which interestingly enough, the fee for Recreation had gone up with the rise of land, because this formula is very sensitive to the price of land in the town, and with the run-up in prices, we had, last year was a much higher fee than what's being proposed in the current manager's capital budget.
The recreation fair share fees at this point have a fund balance of $1.37 million. To date, we've collected $109,000 from July through December, and we are anticipating, you know, a $200,000 year. So I think we will make that dollar amount if we continue as the first six months have been. So I think that the program has provided a great deal of flexibility to the town in being able to deal with recreational expansion of program, both the land acquisition and development. Based on the schedule that we had, we were looking at using about $950,000 of rec fees in the 15-year to deal with the development of the community gym, and we were also looking at potentially using some of the recreation impact fees to deal with the bike path to the commons. Obviously, at this point, that may not occur, and it may be a case that more recreation impact fees would be necessary based on the scoping of the size of that gym. It's not that I think that we have too much money in that reserve, but what I'm suggesting is that it's not the amount that we have in reserve or the needs that we could use, say, at the beach or any of the other program activities. It's really what's a fair and equitable fee that we're collecting at the time of the building permit being issued. Any questions on that? Okay, let's move on to the next component, and that's the fee exemption for affordable housing, and that's on page 82. The schedule that we're putting up on the board is the same schedule that Rhode Island Housing uses in determining what is the value of an affordable housing unit in South Kingston. Essentially, what we're looking at is 80% of median family income for a three-bedroom unit, and assuming a 4.8% interest rate on a 30-year mortgage. What we're looking at is what is the amount of money that would have it so that 30% of the family income would in fact be necessary to pay a mortgage? When we back that out, we come up with $1,040 based on a 4.8% interest rate, net of the cost of paying taxes and insurance on the house, we come up with a value of $198,000. If you were using 120% of the median family income, that would take the value of an affordable unit all the way up to $300,000, which interestingly enough, is the average sale price that has occurred over the past year in South Kingston. This is an important number, because based on the way the ordinance is set up, if someone were to be looking at what's the maximum price that would be available to be exempt from a impact fee, then it would be the 198 plus the person making a commitment that the house for 30 years would be kept in a rental or a mortgage payment at the $198,000 level. So you can be exempt from the recreation and the education fee if you're willing to place the house as an affordable unit. And this is where we start the determination on what the value of that affordable unit would be, if it was a house that was being purchased rather than one being rented.
I know Steve was going to mention this, but this calculation is sensitive to interest rates, and I think, I'm not sure, last year, what the rate that you used, Steve, was...
Yeah, last year, we were using a 6% interest rate, which drove down the cost of the house. I think last year, we were at the $171,000 value. But the interest rate, a viable interest rate, is 4.8. This is also a snapshot in time. At the time that somebody comes in, if they show us what their interest rate is, we'll do the calculation specific for their conditions, as long as they meet the conditions of the 80% of the median family income. If there's no questions, we'll move on. The payment-in-lu requirements for affordable housing is also resonant to the zoning ordinance in terms of requiring the capital budget on a yearly basis to provide a cost associated with what off-site extraction would be. And essentially, what we're looking at here is that the ordinance says that with inclusionary zoning, that a developer of a major subdivision or land development project of greater than six units would be required to provide 20% of the units as affordable housing. Now, within the ordinance itself, there are different steps that can be taken. The preferred step of the zoning board, of the planning board, is that the developer be required to place the affordable housing unit within the subdivision itself. If the developer proves that he cannot complete the construction of the affordable units within the subdivision that he or she is proposing, then the ordinance goes on to set a preferred progression of steps, and that is the affordable housing first, as I said, on the development site itself. The second is for the off-site rehabilitation of an existing structure that could be then dedicated as an affordable housing unit. And if that can't be had, so let's say that if the person were to come in, found a unit on High Street, a duplex on High Street, were to purchase that, renovate it, dedicate that as affordable, it could replace the unit that they said that they could not build within their subdivision. That's the preferred option. If that doesn't, if they can't find an existing structure that can be brought into compliance as an affordable unit, the next step in the progression would be for them to acquire land that would then be turned over to the town or to a housing trust that could be then used to build affordable housing. If they can't find land, and they couldn't find a house, and they couldn't build it on their site, the last option is the in-lu fee requirement. And the in-lu fee requirement is figured on this basis. We have an average sale price in town of $300,000. We have an affordable housing unit total price of $198, which we got from the prior page, means the difference between the two is $102,000. If the three options that are preferred in advance of the in-lu fee are not possible, then the developer, based on approval of the planning board, would be required to pay $102,000 for not putting that affordable unit in, and that $102,000 would have to go into land trust for affordable housing, where the town would either provide the money to a nonprofit to develop the property, or would develop property for affordable housing purposes themselves. Again, we have never seen this happen to date on any of the subdivisions since inclusionary zoning has been put into place. I don't expect that it will occur, because I think it's a very hard road for somebody to be able to prove on a subdivision that they're unable to provide 20% of the affordable units within that subdivision space itself. If they couldn't, it may well be that the yield plan that they had was too hard to begin with. So I think that, you know, from our perspective, the ordinance sets this up as a final potential step, but I'm not sure that it is ever going to be exercised. But the way we would calculate the fee is based on what's on the screen at this point. It would be an in-lu fee of $102,000. And again, at that, let's say that in June of this year, the affordable housing, let's say that the price is changed from 300 on an average is up to 320, we would do a recalculation. The council isn't setting the overall value here tonight, but this is the methodology that would be employed based on the best of...
I, I would just add, this ordinance has been in place for the, since October of 2007, and the idea of what option is available for the developer is a matter of discretion on the planning board, not, not the discretion of the developer. We often have, we've, in talks with developers, we've, we've mentioned what the fee is, and it gets them focusing back on providing the units because the fee is, and it's meant to be an incentive to provide the units and the other methodologies and the progression noted. It is interesting to note that this fee for last year in the sample calculation, I think, was nearly $112,000. So again, it, it's reflective of the sales price and sensitive to the interest rate stuff, so it, it fluctuates along around. But when a developer does a inclusionary model, now, it typically would contact Rhode Island Housing because it would, it would be a time certain based on what the current interest rates were and, and the tax rate of the town that would, that would determine that maximum sale price.
I mean, if the mortgage rates go up to 6% in September, and we're looking at somebody coming forward with either of the two calcs that are here, we're going to recalculate based on what that rate would be. That would make the spread much larger because I think the objective here is to have the in lieu fee being as high as possible to dissuade people from trying to get to that because, you know, 102,000 really isn't going to buy you an affordable housing unit. That, it may get you the land, but it's not going to get you the, the structure itself.
Having this fee calculated in the capital budget for the year is very useful for my office's purposes because when we talk to people that are considering doing developments, and they have, and they're informed of their obligation to provide some of the affordable, you know, you have a number to work with right off the bat, so they have an idea of what, so it, it would help a, a potential developer in their, you know, pro forma in their planning for, you know, crafting a, a scenario for developing a property, so.
So again, it's a snapshot in time, but we would adjust accordingly based on, on what the actuals were, based on the time, the time of the application. Any other questions? If not, that's, that concludes what we were going to go through tonight. The next meeting will be on January 15th. That'll be with the school department, school committee will be in at that, on January 13th, I apologize. And that will be to go over the long-term financial program for, for school purpose and their proposed capital improvement program, capital budget first year items. Again, I think that's an important session because, as I said last night, they're asking at this point for $160,000 more than what their base document was in the current year. I think that that number is going to have to be pared down substantially so that it can be incorporated into their overall operating budget request that comes forward to us on February 14th.
We have one question, Jim?
Steve, any of the earlier conversations tonight, the earmarks in Washington being withdrawn, is South Kingstown subject to any of that? Any grants, anything that might affect us?
I'm not aware of any time that South Kingstown's ever received an earmark other than the money that went to Ministerial Road and, and, and 138. Those are the only two earmarks that, that I'm familiar with. And both of those were in place, and the 14 for 138 is still, is still active.
The bike path is also earmarked.
All right, for Phase 3, yeah. But that's under construction, so I don't see that changing.
Yeah, I think it was moving forward that, I wasn't sure with that, with the new Congress, if it was in the current year or the next year. I mean, things like the cliff walk in Newport was going to lose a million, I mean, there were really some savage changes.
I don't believe that the feds have got an, an actual budget in place now. They've only got an appropriations carrying act that's in place, so if there were earmarks in the current year, they certainly would be subject to closer scrutiny.
And just for formality, I'm just going to open it up to any questions from the Okay, at this time, just wanted to again thank Stephen and Alan and all of the staff, Ben, all the staff that were here last night. This is a statement of the community needs, and it definitely has shown the public how their taxpayers, the taxpayers' dollars are being spent, and show that the taxpayers are most appreciative of all the time that goes into writing the grants that have been secured for, for by this town. So again, thank you, and the meeting is adjourned.